Good afternoon. Today we have a special session and this... in this room, you may belong to a very special person because other group talking about the general issues, but here focused on basic science. Let me explain a little bit about basic science and fundamental technology in Korea. About 12 years ago, in Korea, there was some movement. Korea is going very good process, but we are lack of basic science and fundamental technology. So the government of society to have to build one... Okay, here we have director of real isotop science project. So some ground reactor is some construction in this town. You... some of you may know it. And by doing that, Korea can reduce the money to pay both the patent for fundamental technology or style, the basic science pay okay to United States or Japan. You may know in Hyundai car making company, they make their own car in 11% of interest in income, okay? And about that, about 6% is going to pay for patent to Japan or USA. So it's that situation, so government decide to why we not do it? So to enter into post great, okay, country in the world, we should change our policy. Here we have the Dedex Science Town. This is the center of science and technology in Korea. But all research center is just applied science, not basic science. So here we are just beginning of stepping, okay, ahead, stepping into make the cornerstone of basic science. So here we have some person from Switzerland and some person from Korean basic research institute. So this are maybe very sincere or focused time, I hope. And it is very much honor for our TA to have this time today. Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Francisco Javier Caceres. I am here on behalf of IFIC, the Institute of Corpuscular Physics located in Valencia in Spain. But also as a unitus, general manager of the Spanish Association of Science Industry. That means the companies to work to build these big instruments like accelerators, neutrino observatories, telescopes, that kind of things that push and are instrumental to do the science that we need, the basic science to forge the technologies we are using. So for me, it's an honor to be here. It's my third time and I need to first express my gratitude to the organizations for giving us this opportunity and to introduce science as one of the model tribes of smart city or intelligent community or whatever we want to name this new society we have in front of us. Science is important. So this is special session deals with science. Science is a word we are going to repeat, but also with future and with innovation. But most of all deals with human challenges, with development, with sustainability, with job creation, with social benefits. All these are the benefits of science. Welcome, welcome everybody to this session. I hope it's fruitful for you. We had the opportunity to count in the following minutes with the contribution of four excellent speakers, as you can see. Pablo Remondo comes from the Institute of Astrophysics in the Canary Islands, where the biggest optical telescope in operation today is located, as well as some more than 30 different observatories. Dr. Min Kwon is the director of Grown, the new accelerator that Daijun is building now in the outskirts of the city. It's a fantastic work and it's an effort that should be congratulated. It's... we have the opportunity to see it today and it was really impressive. Paolo Laffiatego is the head of the Department for Technology Transfer and Big European Projects at THERM. THERM is the biggest laboratory in high energy physics on the world and has a lot of experience in technology transfer. And Javier Diaz, that is the CEO of a company, Seven Solutions Company located at Granada in Spain. And that is a very good case of technology transfer that was originated to this technology in a science research facility and has been used for some other applications and it's a case of international success. So let's begin with this general introduction saying this fashion word, innovation. Innovation is catching word. Innovation in a short definition is the change that brings value, short word. We can add a lot of things, but this is a normally well-accepted definition. But this change, where is originated this kind of changes? We could say that at the origin are the basic research. Where the basic research is done, there are the beginnings of these changes. And the places for that are universities, technology centers, research specialized centers. But you know that today we are working with dimensions that are outside the human scale. We talk about temperature that are the same temperature as the sun temperature. We work with also with distances that are millions of light years. So all these dimensions means that we need a special instrument in order to make the measurements and the testing. So very special scientific facilities are needed to make this basic science. And these facilities, and I'm going to be fast just in order to give you a general idea, are facilities like this one, for instance, Interfusion Project, one of the soul goal humanity projects, about 30,000 millions estimated in budget, international effort situated in France, in Carreche. This is the one that is just in the building, the extremely European large telescope that is located in Chile. It's about 1,500 million euros in budget. It's a telescope that has a main mirror of about 39 meters in diameter. The Human Brain Mapping Project, similar to the first one, the Genoma Project. This is the Human Brain Mapping Project. This is probably the origin of the cure for some mental illnesses like Alzheimer, Parkinson, etc. Particle Accelerator Large Hadron Collider that is already in use in Switzerland. At THERM, the Eiffel Dome Accelerator at Granada that is just beginning. It's a new medium sized accelerator in order to test materials. The European Solar Telescope that is going to be built in the following years in the Canary Islands. The International Space Station and other humanity projects, more than 150,000 million that have been spent until now and is going to spend more. Superkamiokande Observatory, that is a neutrino observatory in Japan. James Webb Space Telescope with a budget of more than 7,500 million euros. Grown, the rare isotope accelerator, that is the accelerator I mentioned before that is being built here in the outskirts of Daijun. The Chiricov Telescope Array in the Canary Islands. And also half of this project is located in Chile. The Synchrotron Light Source in San Gai. There are several synchrotons in the building on the world at this moment, but this one is one of the newest. The Mars Mission, several countries are organizing missions to Mars. This is very important for the future. It's not just a way to spend money. People, the big nations, advanced nations are positioning themselves in Mars. India, among others, have been quite successful. Mira Accelerator Driving Reactor in Belgium. This is probably the next way to transmit radioactivity components in order to lower the aggressiveness of this kind of components. Very important for humanity and many of them. We can be here for half an hour putting nice slides. And many of them are located, it's not necessary to be big projects for doing science. Many of them are medium sized projects in the range of several dollars to several hundred million dollars. Even we have, for instance, a new accelerator in Germany. And Bolivia, there are some activities in space, etc. So the global, to give you some idea in numbers. The global investment in large scientific facilities, more than 40,000 million euros per year. The figure is quite conservative because the figure does not include the expenses and the investments in China. And China is investing a lot. The economic impact of that investment on society is about three times more. We are following the rule of three by each one monetary unit that is invested in basic science. So we are talking about 120,000 million euros per year of economic impact. But the most important thing is not the investment. The important thing is that this investment in new technologies because we need those technologies to cope with these extreme conditions, extreme parameters. So new technologies are key for developing scientific facilities. Different studies, you can go to internet and you can see at least five, six recent studies, but I put just three examples. The Human Genoma Project has had an impact of more than 800 billion dollars. The Atomic Particle Therapies, Hadron Therapy, Proton Therapy, following EuroCard last year has a market, we say market because it's a product that is selling to hospitals and so on, of about 6.9 billion dollars per year. And if we talk about the worldwide web, the economic impact is beyond measurement. We cannot understand our society today without the W W W. So this is important. Countries do science not because they are rich. They are rich because they do science. Some people say, okay, I have no money for that. I need the money for some of the things very important and so on. But always like this. And that is a perverse self-circumcision. If you begin to invest in science, it's not necessary to spend those thousands of millions. You can begin with small, but do science, do basic science. And that is important for the country. The countries are rich because they do science. Let me another perspective. Nowadays, that is a topic, but all of us know that humanity are facing huge challenges. Epidemics overpopulation, contamination, OCS pollution, species disappearance, droughts, floods, energy crisis, etc., etc. It's very common say that the two pillars to solve this situation is technology and ethics. Technology is neutral. Technology can be used for good or for bad. But ethics is the value that is orienting technology. Both are important in order to solve these challenges. As a conclusion, if innovation is highly desired, if scientific research facilities are relevant sources for this innovation, if technological innovative capabilities are key to face vital challenges for humanity, then the question is how can we go as fast as possible from science, from basic science to technology? And from there to industry, to society and to produce innovative and useful products and services? Well, the answer could be activating the innovative potential that is contained in the scientific research facilities, in their experience and knowledge, in their equipment and their needs. So this is special session that I'm going to finish the introduction just now. We present from different perspectives, experiences and examples from various agents that are working in this field. So thanks a lot for your attention to this introduction. Can't say nothing. Thank you. Let me introduce Pablo Remondo. Pablo got his degree at the University of Oviedo and his Applied Physics Master at Alaguna University in Tenerife, as well as his master at the University of Gruus. His professional experience includes position as mechanical engineer at the Canary Island Astrophysics Institute, IAC, and bin line engineer at the European Synchrotron Radiation Facility. He founded and was the chief executive officer of Instrutec, a company that was working, startup that was working with Astrophysics Institute. And nowadays he is the technical manager of the... he adds tech, a new division of the Institute of Astrophysics that is devoted to technology transfer and cooperation with industry. Pablo.
Annyeong, how are you? Well, good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for coming. I'm honored to be here today trying to explain the experience of the Instituto de Astrophysica de Canarias, which means Institute of Astrophysics of the Canary Islands in Spain. Our experience in creating technological and business collaboration space within our organization, which means creating a means to transfer the technology and the knowledge to the society we belong to. And I hope that this is an inspiring, an inspiring example for you to see how basic science can be translated into something more than just science to society. I hope you like it. Okay, to start, to start with, I will show you in a three minutes video what is IAC and was IAC Tech. It is much more entertaining than just listening to me, so that's why I wrote this video. I hope you like it.
This is IAC Tech. This is us today. And this is what we do. IAC Tech is a part of a large family of more than 400 people. The IAC, the Institute of Astrophysics at the Canarias, a public research institute with people from all over the world. At IAC, we talk to our students and to us. And to do so, we design and build some of the most advanced technology in the world for astronomy. At IAC Tech, we use the technology develop. At IAC, to offer the business opportunities for people product technology and science. We make satellites and huge telescopes. And we develop medical technology. We live in face to face, respectful, critically disowned as a way to build trust in the team. It's all the space off in the island. At IAC Tech, we want to share our life with interesting people who love technology and challenges and who make things gorgeous happen. We host students, hire graduates, involve senior professionals, humble comic executives who care for their life quality as much as they care for very extraordinary decaviers. IAC Tech border all the Canary Islands, which are a part of this king, which is a country in European Union. People call the Canary Islands, they can look at Hawaii. Yes, we are happy to share with Hawaii our lawful nature of the central for labor along our spirit. And we're the skies in the world for astronomy. When you first come to IAC Tech, they're bordering Alaguna territory. Do we see socks like this? In fact, this was our first day too. In the office, we are taking a view soon in 2018. This image, more or less long because by the time you arrive, we all will be moving to our brand of the border in the middle of a park. This is what we see when you enter the IAC Tech building, a huge clean room for instruments integration. Here is going to be our office. Or here, you can have breakfast in one of the menu bars nearby. Many of us dream of come to walk on our bus alone as a random park. But we need to prefer to come to walk just the train or using the tram or the bus. This is IAC Tech with this partner. The man on the left is IAC's director. Other man to the right is the president of the Island of Canada. These people lead the tear that made IAC Tech happening in 2016. This chair is very important for IAC Tech. Join the crew.
So this was a promotional video we prepared last year in order to catch the attention of people that might want to join our team engineering. And as you can see, the first thing you have to do is to think about what people will imagine working for your organization. So that's an important part of the story, not only work, but also the environment. Now I want to tell you, I want to share with you the story, two different tales, two different stories. Both are mostly the same. And this first one is the story of the Instituto de Astrophysica de Canarias. It will be very short. It is a story of people who in 50 years' time started from scratch, from zero. There was nothing. And after 50 years have become on top of their specialty, on top of Astrophysics. And I'm doing this this way because when I knew I was coming to Korea, to Korea, I was really impressed by the story of this country in the last decades. And so, well, this is a very small story compared with the story of Korea in the last 50 years, but we are proud to share with you. So 50 years ago, Spain was coming out of the civil war. And in the 60s, the Canary Islands were nothing but agricultural land. There was no industry, there was no tourism as there is today. By that time, there was a guy called Francisco, that man on the photograph, who came to Tenerife trying to prove that Isaac Newton was right when he said some 300 years before. Isaac Newton said, if you find an island in the middle of the ocean, which is bathed by stable winds coming from the sea, and this island is high enough so that it is above the sea of clouds, then this is the perfect place to watch the night start because the sky will be really clear. So Mr. Francisco, who happened to be our funding director, came there and studied the sky of Tenerife and came back to Europe and tried to convince everybody in the European community that this was the perfect place for these institutions to install their technology. But by that time, Spain could not afford and did not know any of the technology to build a telescope. We were just coming out from the war. Everything was devastated. So his success succeeded and the people wanted to bring their telescope to Tenerife. But the deal was the most important thing. What Francisco said is you can come to Tenerife, install in our land your telescope, but 20% of the time of that telescope belongs to the Spanish scientific community. And from one day to the next, we had nothing before and then we had the best telescopes in the world and we had 20% of the time of use of these telescopes. And from that point on, the astronomy in Spain just went rocket high because of this deal. Next. There are 30 years of development because we not only learned how to do science, but we start first understanding how these instruments from abroad worked and then we started to copy them and then we started to improve them. And now we have them really in the top of the list of the best instruments for astronomy in the world. And by the way, we learn how to collaborate with industry because when you're a scientist, you don't care much about industry. But when you are building things, when you are building an instrument, you need to have companies by your side because they know what to do. They know how to build instruments. So that's a very important part of our business. And what we have now is a group of people who know how to do science, but also a group of people, my colleagues, who know how to do instruments for science, for astronomy science. And what's the value of that for the, for the community? Well, apart from that, we learn how to do the largest telescope in the world. So from nothing in 50 years, now we built our largest telescope. It's called the GTC, the Great Telescope on the Canary Islands. And we are proud to say that we learned the basics and the top technology in this world's astrophysics. So this is a bittersweet history. It stops here, but the IAC still keeps working. But we are not very happy that the industry that built this telescope, a lot of Spanish companies built this telescope and they did nothing on astronomy before. So they learned how to build a telescope with this project and that was very important. But the impact we expected in their capacity to apply for other projects and win other projects was not as good as we wanted it to. So that was the seed. That was the beginning of IAC Tech. We said, we have to do something about it. It cannot happen twice. If we have another project, we have to connect with industry so that they are capable of getting to much larger challenges. So... By 2015, there was nothing. And this is my second take, my second story. By 2015, IAC Tech did not exist. There was nothing about it. IAC Tech's mission is to create jobs and connect with industry using the technology we know at the Astrophysics of the Canary Islands. But by that time, we didn't have the money to start this, this project. But there was these conferences about smart cities and the government of the island of Tenerife thought, okay, we want to be smart. So we want to help the Instituto de Astrophysica to bring technology to the people in the island because right now, the island of Tenerife, the islands, in Canary Islands, are, have an economy which is completely based on tourism. So we thought, if anything goes wrong with tourism, what are we going to do with our economy? We have to invest in technology. So they give us the money to start IAC Tech. By the way, I thought it was the right time for me to start my own company. So I stopped my work in the Astrophysical, I took a leave of absence and started my own company. I wish I could tell my own company was a success. It wasn't. It was a success in terms of personal experience because in one year and a half, I learned much more than I had learned in 15 years before, both in engineering, which is my specialty, I do that kind of stuff, and also in... and also in, uh, the ropes of how a company really behaves. Because I knew nothing, I thought I knew a lot of things, but I knew nothing absolutely. You realize when you start your own company. So I recommend you to start your own company if you ever want to learn the basics of how the economy works. And I don't know if, well, I think I was lucky enough because the Cabildo, the government of the island, saw my initiative and thought, okay, you are going to get, IAC, Institute of Astrophysical, is going to get the funds to have more people like Pablo doing their own companies. So they asked me, do you want to come back and manage this, uh, this project? And I said, okay, because my company is not going to work on my own. I had not the power to move things around the way I can do it with more people. So we hired seven engineers and we started two projects which are related to the technology we know, but not exactly for astrophysics, that's the sense of IAC Tech. Doing things we know how to do, but not related directly to astrophysics in some sense. So we started to create nanosatellites for earth observation, not the sky observation, but earth observation. And we also started to work with images from the body in the same way we use the images from the sky to detect, for example, diseases like diabetes. I will show you a little. I also started, uh, checking the construction of our main new building. But you have to realize something, that in Spain, we are, well, I guess in every country, sometimes when you want to start a big project, you start by building a big building. And the building is not the essence of the project. The essence of the project is the people working for that building. So you don't need a fancy building to have a nice project, you just need convinced and devoted people to do that. But in any case, we had the building as well. So this was by 2015, seventeen. This is one year ago, this is a clean room. A clean room is a very expensive room where you, uh, have a very clean air. And we need that because we create instruments for optics. And if you have dust in your optics, then if you want to see the stars, you will see new stars where there is nothing because it's not a star, it's, it's a dot in your optics, right? So you want to have clean facility. And this is the new building. And this is us today. We started three years ago with seven people and now we are more or less reaching the thirty, thirty-something people. Why? Because there are three new projects coming to join the nanosatellites and the medical technology, which are the three largest telescopes on their field in the world, which are the Cherenkov Telescope Array, the European Solar Telescope, and the New Robotic Telescope. And you would say, well, but that's what normal IAC is supposed to do. Yes, but they start with IAC Tech because we want to give them a different focus. Our focus is not just the telescope. Our focus is all the technology that might bring this telescope to us and to the companies that want to work with us. So we are focusing on building this in collaboration with the industry and other countries. This is the Cherenkov Telescope Array, a really nice telescope that is already being built and most of these components are being, uh, manufactured in Europe. And this is another video I want to show you about the solar telescope. This is a very important telescope for us because it's the largest in the world in the observation of the sun. And we are currently looking for partners from abroad in Europe to join this project because it's really interesting and it's the future of astrophysics in the solar specialty. There are few places in the world where the astronomical platform for the Canary Islands can. For this reason, the observatories on the Canary Islands are clearly the ideal location for the European solar telescope. EST. EST will be the largest scientific facility for the observation of the sun in Europe so far. Projects like this one can only be done when we work together at a global scale. The projects involve the entire European scientific community dedicated to the study of the sun. There are twenty-one partners from fifteen European countries supporting this initiative.
Nobody wants to stay out of this unique adventure that will allow us to see the sun with a level of stillness that has never been achieved before. The EST is a dream for any solar physicist. A few years ago, it would have been impossible to imagine a telescope with the dimension and technology of the EST. It will give nearly four times larger than the telescopes are real playing in Europe. And a telescope will be located in a million fifty meters height. It will be on a platform with seventy-eight meters in diameter covered with a reflector dome.
Supposedly, the heat generated by the sun is one of the major enemies of the telescope. Heat generates turbulence and that affects the quality of the telescope. At higher altitude, more laminates do occur and that will improve the thermal behavior of the telescope as it will operate in a different configuration with an objective dome. Moreover, passive and active thermal control system will take under control all the thermal aspects of the deep and solar telescopes.
In the east, the mirrors will be key to its success. A total of fourteen mirrors will guide and correct the light coming from the sun to the instrument that will analyze in detail. The primary mirror, which have an area of more than four meters in diameter, been one of the biggest mirrors manufactured until now for solar observations. This mirror will also be mounted on a network of pack layers that will correct the deformations of its surface. These deformations, shown by the wind, changes in temperature, or even the weight of the mirror itself.
The light reflected on the primary mirror will converge at the primary focus where a heat stop will be located to avoid overheating of the secular mirror on the spider. The heat stop will select the desired field view and will reflect away ninety-nine percent of the light. At the same time, a cooling system consisting of an air circuit and a cooling block will cool down the system. The secular mirror is responsible for collecting the light reflected by the primary. Uh, it will be placed on a mobile structure or head support that will allow to make certain correction on the solar image, uh, by defining the optical operations and guaranteeing the maximum optical quality of the telescope. Uh, it will also have a cooling system to avoid, uh, local turbulence that will affect the quality of the image.
The secondary mirror will transfer the light into a set of optical arrays, which conduct very light along the ESD tower. They will replay when the telescope moves following the fundamental observation. And they are one of the most important parts of the EST, it's, it will have to have existing. One of the problems to astronomical observation done with telescopes from the earth comes from our atmosphere that reflects light not in the final image. To solve this, we use adaptive techniques. In the case of the EST, for the form of mirrors, we correct in real time any distortion of the light caused by the atmospheric turbulence at the time that produce, uh, an image almost as clear in detail as in the telescope were in space.
So, well, I like this video, but I don't want to be so long with my presentation. Uh, next thing, uh, we are, uh, doing here, as I told you, is nanosatellites for earth observation. And also, we are trying to understand how to work these cameras in altitude by using, um, uh, stratospheric, uh, rooms. So as you see, this is something that we didn't know what, have to do before, but we are learning by doing. By the way, this is what we do with these nanosatellites. Uh, I didn't tell you that these, these people working for IAC Tech, that's another deal with, behind IAC Tech. These people are hired, but only for four years. It's kind of like a school of engineering. If they end the four years, they don't get any contract in, in IAC Tech, what they have to do is to either start their own company or join another company that comes to the Canary Islands, or just creating jobs by themselves. So it's a new vision, that we don't want to have public employment forever, but we want these people to create their own employment, that's the point. And last, but not least, this is medical technology. Uh, what you see there is someone, somebody lying with their feet. Uh, the people with diabetes, they develop, uh, injuries that you don't see under the skin until they are very big and they appear on the skin, that's too late. So what we do is we use the infrared thermal technology and the microwave technology we know from astrophysics to detect the injuries before they appear in the skin. Uh, these microwave sensors, we use them to understand, in our telescopes, to understand the creation of the universe. During the Big Bang, there was a lot of radiation that now is in the shape of, in the form of microwave radiation. So we use the same technology to help people with diabetes. And now before, this is my last two minutes. Uh, I wanted to share with you, not just advice, because I think I need more advice from you than you need from me, but it's just something I learned in the process of being, uh, engineer for a public research institution on basic science and then being the boss of my own company and then coming back to help other people creating their own companies. And I hope it's useful for you. The best thing I, I can tell you is, uh, degrees, MBAs, masters, PhDs, they don't keep a, a real business running. Uh, you don't learn how to be an entrepreneur by doing MBAs. So if you want to learn how to be an entrepreneur, just start your own company. I happened to do, uh, my own MBA after I was, uh, the chief of my company. And I can tell you that I didn't learn nothing on MBA that I had not learned before just by doing. So, uh, and also in the academia, we tend to think that because we are doctors and engineers, we are clever people, we know everything of everything. And we know, of course, how to run a successful business, we don't. So just be humble. And second tip is understand, understand who's your client now. Uh, most of the people, uh, workers of Astrophysical know their client is the science, uh, the scientific people that want their instrument to be built. Now, we teach them to understand that they have to get connection with future clients because it's going to change in four years' time, they have to look for their own clients. And it takes a process of formation on how to build networks of people, how to connect with other, uh, possible clients. Uh, also, it's quite important to find out what you are really here for. Uh, the mission is clear, for IAC Tech, it's not, our mission is not building telescopes nor building satellites, our mission is to create jobs, technological jobs. So every decision we take in the end is driven by that, by that basic thought, we want to create jobs in the end. The telescope is not that important. It is important, but it's not the most important thing. Listen to people that tell you that wrong, you are wrong, especially, uh, from industry. Because if they tell you that, hmm, it's not going to be helpful for them, no matter how much you think it's going to be helpful for the society of the industry, it's not going to be. So please, listen to people. And there's another point, and this is my favorite, I guess. Uh, when you're an engineer in a, in a place like a high technology place, you tend to spend your time doing things as good as you can, and this is important. But you tend to forget that there are other variables in the, in the equation. And these variables are time and money. So you cannot spend three more years in your project than you're supposed to do because you want to do it perfect. You have to do it perfectly with the time and the money you have. So that's really important when you come to reality of a business. Because otherwise, you go broke. Be humble because you give other people MBA pouring scientist or engineer. And finally, this is maybe the best one. You need a lawyer. And, uh, above everything, you need a salesman. Because we think that we know everything of our own domain, but that doesn't mean that other people want to pay us for doing so. So get someone that knows how to sell the product, that's really important. Okay, thank you very much, very much for your attention.
Thank you, Pablo, for your very interesting speech. Now, I pass the floor to Mr. Javier Diaz. Javier Diaz received his, uh, his doctorate in electronics from the University of Granada. And he combines his passion for research with different industrial activities. He has founded two different IT companies. Um, nowadays, he participates and contributes to, uh, Seven Solution Company. Since, uh, he is in the company, the company has grown twenty-fold, that is something to have in mind. And on the technological side, his interests are related with high-performance embedded systems. We focus in, uh, RF control systems for particle accelerators and highly accurate time synchronization and frequency dissemination solution. So that's the scientific part of it, but let's say that it's a very important piece of equipment for vintage and telecoms, that is much later.
So, good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for, for listening and being here, and thank you for the invitation. So I, I know I try to explain a different, uh, side of the equation related with the technology transfer. So I'm trying to present my experience from the, uh, industrial point of view, how we can collaborate with a research facility, in particular with CERN. And hopefully, we will be able to provide some, a sample of some ideas that let you know at least what was our path and how we grow and create our solution. So this, uh, quick overview of the, of the talk. I will just focus on a very brief introduction about the company. I will try to avoid as much as possible any technicalities, but just focus with the key ideas and concepts. And then try to explain the, the, the evolution of this technology transfer, okay? So, very briefly, so we are a, uh, a medical company that we develop some telecommunications technology basically related with the ethernet technology, uh, in the framework of time transfer and timing. So we basically try to take clock from one side and using the communication network, put the same clock in a, in a different side. And there are many applications related with that and we apply in different markets. But I will try today to explain what has been our evolution in this concept, okay? We also, uh, as Javier said, we also collaborate in different, uh, particle accelerator regarding the low-level control system, all the, uh, technology related with this kind of, uh, create, design, manufacturing, production and software for this. And also, we developed some strain technology for, for frequency dissemination function, uh, strain application. If you have any question, I can try to explain it later, okay? So, let's try to explain where we was in 2009. So our company set was created in 2006. So we, we were a, uh, electronic company. We designed and produced, uh, printed circuit board at that time. Uh, our business core was offering design services to, to, to industry and academics for different project. Um, we were pretty small, so about five employees and a small revenue of the company, and that was the status. Um, at that time, we have, uh, ambition and passion. We would like design this kind of, uh, technological challenge, but we, we were facing many trouble trying to penetrate the, the international market and bigger problem. At that time, we received a, a call from CERN and they and they talked about some strain technology called wideband. There was something related with this timing that I commented before, so trying to take a clock and using Ethernet technology to move to a different place. And they have this scientific concept, and they want to see if they can promote into a much more commercial solution, much more standard solution. And that's what we tried to do. So we accepted the challenge at that time, and we started to work in close collaboration with CERN in the development of this technology. And hopefully, we can, or you can get some ideas of what was our roadmap and how we collaborate with them. So first of all, the way of collaboration that we addressed was sitting together with the people of CERN. So this was not, they give, Pablo, this is really because we were talking before about that. So this is not that they say, this is the pattern or this is the documentation, go and sell it, it's not like this. So they bring us with a concept, and we sit together and we try to develop the solution. So it's not about knowing how to do it, but it's also how to build a real commercial industrial product. So, and this is what we did together. And we sit, both of us, and we finally achieved with this telecommunications equipment, what is the wideband. Blah, 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 but it's something physical that you can touch it, and you can produce, and you can sell it. So this is how everything is started, okay? From that, it's also important to remark, so how to sell it. We were a very small company in Granada, south of Spain. Nobody knows, okay? So how do you get that big company or this big research facility trust on you? That you are going to develop a technology that is critical for their development? So that means that we need to find a way to show that we are trustworthy and you can collaborate with us. And in that framework, it's important to remark that it's not only about innovation in technology. Innovation in the business side is also critical. So in that framework, we developed something. There's something missing here, but it's commercial technology, and these are non-commercial technology. So if you have proprietary technology and are commercial, you have a typical end-to-end solution that everybody knows. If you have something that is proprietary but is not commercial, it's nothing, nobody, nobody sell it. If you have something with this open source, but you don't have any company providing support, providing service, it's a nightmare. If you work in a research facility and you try to help to promote the technology because you develop and it's open, but you don't have any industrial support, that will cannibalize your engineering resource and your scientific people, and you will not do what you are supposed to do, typically developing such facility. So the approach is, if you have a commercial technology and open, you have no end-to-end, you have industrial support, and that will allow to scaling up that technology. So this was the challenge that we faced. So we decided to go for this business model that we know that is open, we know there is some risk, but there was something needed at that time. And then, we tried to find our position as a bridge between this open community that wanted to play, to develop, to use that solution, and in other way, this real commercial user that maybe don't have time to know all the details or don't have the manpower to develop all the technicalities. So we work as a bridge, and that was our position at that time. So, and then we are reached in 2012, that were thanks to the collaboration with CERN. So we get a singular technology. So the idea, the concept was originated at CERN, okay? And this also was a small, but important at that time, income stream. This provide us some focus in the specification and the requirement. So don't lose time trying to define what you have to do. Also, help to incorporate the quality pressure and standards, and also a valid preference design with high international visibility. So working for CERN, and this for us, was a good example of what are the capability that a small company located in the south of Spain, in Granada, what Granada was able to do, okay? And as before, the business model. So that was really a good start, something very promising, but we cannot start there, so we need to move on. And the next evolution, the next natural evolution is, okay, we have already developed this for CERN. It has been used for the grand SASO neutrino experiment. So we get some publicity about that, but we need to move on because the business is not so big to be honest. And then we decide to go to some other different research facility, okay? And this is what we do. We started to work with the astrophysic community, trying to promote the utilization of this open hardware solution in some other facility. In particular, we work, already Pablo has commented about the CDA. It's not in Spain, but Chile, the solution that we're using is going to be used there. We are also working with the KIENFRENET, Neutrino Telescope Array. We are also collaborating with the Square Polarometer Array. So we take that technology that was originated from particle accelerator for CERN, and we move to some other research facility. And we get success. If you see right now where our technology is in use, so we are providing technology for Japan, in different China, in the High School, in Rusia, in United States, Furbila. Many, many different places where our solution is already in use or there are some planning to be used. So it's a good sample to see how we can make the technology transfer from a particular use case to many more. Then, this allow us to approach 2016, where we already have this success in the industry for science, but still, the problem is the same. The business is still small, you need to innovate, you need to make things even better. And there is many customer knocking the door and saying, okay, we want to use that, but we need a more, let's say, standard technology. The problem of the academic or research facility technology is that many of the time, you are taking into account you have a huge or big talented group of IT people that allow to develop and use this technology. And this is not the case in many standard industrial application. So, we decide to move from the industry of science market to some other, in particular, to the vintage and telecommunications, adding some more standard capabilities. So interoperability with some other standard, resiliency capability, support, service, some other quality, blah, blah, blah. So just focusing on the industrial capability of the solution. And we did, and we developed a whole branch of new product addressing this industrial market. So that's probably not for, that can be used in the industrial facility, but the focus and the goal is for industrial application. So we developed a huge, not huge, but a good coverage of product for such market, with different kind of capability and solution for each of them, and we're going to detail. But the important is that we developed a new concept from the original one. So from the CERN use case, we moved to the other facilities. And from that, we go to the industrial market. And we developed something that we call solution for data center timing. It's much more like data center timing of our market, where we can talk about the vintage, but also we can think about mobile network, video broadcasting, gaming application, and many other different application. Just trying to apply to different market. Although the requirement, the technology is cutting-edge, which means that the specs are very high for the standard industrial application, what typically happens is that what we are using right now in science is something that we will use maybe 10 years ahead in our commodity system. And this is what really we are seeing what is happening. Because when we started to talk about nanosecond time frame and low heater frequency dissemination, nobody cared. And people said, who needs it? Only CERN and some crazy people, for example, telescopes, say that. I feel like that. And what happened is that right now, we are already providing pilot and deployment in some key technology, early start, but the thing are growing little by little. And we are seeing that this technology is already moving to the industrial market. And this is just my last slide. I just wanted to remark some of the lessons that we learned in this. So for us, the CERN touch was an inflection point. So was really something that allow us to go from this standard electronic company, developing solution for customer to an international leader on timing solution. That's what we will provide. So for that, we need this key technology that is able to scale to different market and application. That is fundamental, of course. You need some national funding and some early package in order to develop the technology. This is not for free. You need to provide some income stream in order to really develop the technology. The role of the transfer institution, that was CERN's case, but it can be EIC or RON or whatever, the role of the transfer institution is key because it's allowed to provide the base use case that you use to promote your capability and the solution. It's important to remark that you need also to innovate in the business. So if you think that just having the market is, or the technology is enough, this is not the case. So you need to think twice about the business, about how to scale, about how to collaborate, many, many different things. So we have been having discussions with our colleague at CERN for many times about how to join forces and what is the role of the different institutions in order to make this technology a real success, okay? And I think we need, we go from science to this industrial application through particle accelerator, astrophysic, to many others. Just to remark that this business, the collaboration and a clear view of the government and authorities on how to promote or how to make this collaboration take place is really mandatory and important. Okay, so that's all from my side, so thanks a lot.
Now, I call Dr. Kwon, Korean scientist and researcher, whose many achievements include the development of the KIA Star, the Korean Superconduit Tokamak Advancing Research, and the Pohan Light Source. He has been awarded with the National Science Medal from the Korean Government in 2009. Dr. Kwon has been the director of the KIA Star Research Center and was appointed as the third president of the National Fusion Research Institute, which is a national institute dedicated to conducting research and development of fusion energy in Korea. The institute developed and operates KIA Star, fostered the education of fusion scientists and engineers, and performs basic plasma and fusion research and development. Presently, Dr. Kwon has been appointed as the director of rare isotopic science project under the Institute for Basic Science, GIA, ATJAM. A mega-science project building a state-of-the-art scientific research facility. Dr. Kwon is fellow of the Korean Physical Society, the Korean Nuclear Society, and the Korean Vacuum Society. For us, it's an honor to give your contribution. Thank you very much.
Gertl, it's my honor to be here to introduce the Korean case study, especially for these sessions. The title of my talk is "The Examples of Social Economic Impact of Large Centered Projects: One that Carries Transcorp and Technology-Driven Startups in Korea." So actually, this is a case study based on my previous work a couple of years ago, which I presented on International Conference of Research Infrastructures. So the content is, I briefly introduce about the Korean research infrastructure, actually, the history of the Korean research infrastructures. And I will touch on the result of the case study for one of the Korean research infrastructure project, which is called ETO Korea Project, which I was involved. So the credit and case study consists of three pages. The first one is the assessment for scientific and technological performance. Then, assessment of social impact and assessment of economic impact of this project. Then I briefly touch on the case examples from industrial side, then summarize my talk. So Korea has relatively very short, but very dynamic history of research and development history in modern science and technologies. Many people normally divide the last 50, 60 years of Korean history of the science and technology in three different parts. First, imitative stages, mostly in 1960s and 1970s. And then, creative imitative stage. Somebody said past part of stages. So maybe year 1980s and 1990s, maybe, is in this stages. Then, from 21st centuries, year 20s, so we call first mover stages, which is, in other word, innovative stages beginning in Korea. So if I divide the last 50 or 60 years of Korean history in science and technology in these three different categories, I can show you examples of this. Actually, this simple video shows the GDP evolution of Korea for last maybe 70 years. Actually, this is the year of Korean independence in 1945, after World War II. At that time, Korea is very poor countries. And as you might know that in 1950, there is a Korean war beginning here for three years. So this Korean war totally devastated the whole countries. At that time, I found that Korea is one of the world poorest countries. So for three years of the Korean war ended in 1953, many western countries offered Korean government some kind of financial aid or economic aid. So they asked Korean government, or president of Korean government, what we can do for you to rebuild your country. So they expected, maybe Korean government ask to build some kind of factory or industries for living necessities, like a clothes or shoes or even agricultural product. for living necessities like a clothes or shoes or even agricultural product. But Korean president at that time asked to United States build a research infrastructure. Actually, this is research infrastructure, the nuclear experimental reactor, which was newly developed, developed in United States at that time, Trigama Two. So United States, the president of United States, and actually, the officials in government in United States is shocked. Why you need that in the world poorest country? Why you need this kind of advanced research infrastructure? I think this is the good example, as Javier said in the first, country is, okay, country began rich because country, that country do the science. So after that, large changes in Korean society. Korea joins the OECD in nineteen fifty-four or five, and Korean economy grows very fast for last fifty years, and large new research infrastructures were established. So this, this is one of the example, and this is short, but very dynamic history of Korean economy and also Korean research infrastructure. First modern research infrastructures was constructed in nineteen fifty-nine. It is, its society impact was very, very big, very enormous. It accumulated human capital, increased R and D investment, create new companies and new jobs, change energy market share, build network, knowledge, skill offers, and change country from import of the technology to export. So there is, there are some examples. This is number of students trained in the field of nuclear engineering because Trigama Two is the nuclear experimental reactor. So Korean government asked to build a nuclear reactor, experimental reactor in nineteen fifty-eight. They allow two university to open nuclear engineering department, nineteen fifty-eight and nineteen fifty-nine. Hanjang University and Seoul National University open new department. And the brightest student all of the country gather here. And then after that, about two hundred, three hundred new students are trained for last fifty years. So large manpower are prepared. Revenue change in nuclear industry. There are new nuclear industries emerging, and also large peoples are gathered here. So the revenue changes in this area of industries, as you can see in these pictures. And change in energy mix. So in nineteen seventy-six, the first nuclear power plant was built and in operating in Korea. At that time, only eight percent of the nuclear energy in the whole energy mix, but in twenty seventeen, more than twenty percent is taken by the nuclear. And finally, after fifty years, after groundbreaking ceremony in nineteen fifty-nine for this nuclear research infrastructure, year two oh nine, Korea export their first nuclear power plant to another country. So it takes, it tooks fifty years to change the whole country. But this changes starting from this nuclear research infrastructure, which was built in nineteen fifty-nine. Now Korea is build various research infrastructures from nineteen ninety-five, so generation light source, Pohan light source, and year two oh five, another accelerators and nuclear fusion tokamaks and space launcher, launching facilities. And also Korea joined the international collaboration of astronomical facilities like Alma, gigantic modular telescope, and also EITA. And also we are doing, we are building a new accelerators like Lawrence and also space exploration. We don't know what will be the next, but there are large proposals still. So this is the changes. Then I will briefly mention or introduce the result of the case study, how this kind of research infrastructure changed in the society in different perspectives. So I introduce EITA project. You might know that what this project is. EITA is aiming to demonstrate the feasibility to integrate science, technology, and safety features for commercial fusion reactor. And self-sustained BT, due to treating burning plasma in EITA, will generate five hundred watt of thermal power, which is ten times more than the UPA. And EITA Enterprise will create a new collaborative culture and standard for solving energy and environmental problems and contributing to world peace. And all of the intellectual properties obtained belongs equal to all seven members. So Korea is one of the member of EITA enterprises. And Korea will provide ten of in-kind contribution to the EITA and also human resources. So right now, about fifty Korean scientists or engineers are participating in EITA. And this is a, will be old picture of the EITA site. This is March twenty eighteen, when the completion rate is about fifty-five percent. Right now is more than sixty percent. And there are many features and challenges of this project. This is international research infrastructure under construction. So EITA project for constructing a single-sided international research infrastructure with integration of distributed resources, here in-kind contribution by members of domestic agencies. And EITA project has five distinctive pages in its project lifecycle, which are design stages, construction stages, operation, deactivation, and decommission. And now is under the construction phase. There are large stakeholders. There are various different views of the project. So it's very difficult to operate. And quality is the key concern on how to control and manage the integration of in-kind component. And this will be the first of a kind fusion device. So there are enormous technical challenges. So design of a certain key component is not completely possible until now. Design of some components is still ongoing. And there are no explicit lessons learned or technical glitches. And EITA is a basic nuclear installation, French language. So all this kind of features make this project very challenging. So Korea is one of the member of this project. So this has ten in-kind contribution partner, broker activities that Korea should provide to EITA. So this case study was researches, the best impact assessment of this project on the Korean society in three different points. So first one is scientific and technical performance assessment, and then social impact assessment, and finally, economic impact assessment of this project. First, scientific and technical performance assessment. So some of the index that this study took is the present completion of the project, contribution to elevating the level of Korean fusion R and D technical tree, and publication of papers, citation of papers, and number of patents and technology transfer. Some of the examples, so this is present completion, this is as of December twenty seventeen. So now, actually, Korean domestic agency finish to provide all PF conductors. And end of this year, they will provide the first baking vessel and baking vessel port, and they provide hundred percent of summer shield already, and they have provided already the hundred percent of assembly tools. And all these other things are still ongoing. So present completion is in good phase. Also, this Korean project continue to elevate the level of the Korean fusion R and D technical trees. So actually, the, we are expecting about this kind of level of the technological level when we finish the operation of EITA project. And the yellow point is the current level in Korean fusion R and D technical trees. So we are expecting, even before EITA, I think Korean level is behind, below this level, but we are elevating this position to the higher, higher part. Technology transfer during EITA Korea project. So this is the result of indirect performance and qualitative assessment. So many company and industries say that the technology transfer from this EITA, from this project to their companies. So the technology transfer sector is to machinery equipment, plant IC, chemical engineering, metallurgy, and all various areas of industries. And also disciplines, aerospace, radiation, and accelerator, and medical, mechachoings areas. So all kind of new technologies which are learned from EITA Korea project is transferred to other side of the industries and other side of the disciplines. Social impact assessment. Some of the indicators, number of student train, numbers of accountable to the EITA organization, technical innovation of industries, added value to the brand of industries, support to industries in resolution of technical issues, and intellectual properties generated by industries. So some of the examples. And we made a survey, and at the survey, the technical competition of some industries has been, has been grown up to the level of world class. So this blue line here in the, blue line here is the, the level of the industry before they joined EITA project. And the level of the red one is the after they joined EITA project. So they said is the technical competition of their, their industry, their company has been grown up after they joined this project. And added value is also the company brand power value in after their participation of this project. In terms of company brand, it is a combination of increase of revenues or export, or increase of winning rate at the other project bidding, or increase of ownership business. And support to industries in resolution of technical issues also improved. So some company had resolved their longstanding technical problems in consultation with experts in EITA Korea project. And also IP generated by industries via EITA Korea project has increased. So and finally, the economy impact assessment, the indicators that we are taking is investment of investment cost and turnover of industries and cost benefit of investment, and number of created job and created new and potential business in industry and support to competitive needs of small, medium-sized enterprises. So this is total investment to the EITA Korea project from two oh six to two hundred twenty sixteen. So total number of investment money is seven hundred thirteen million US dollar. And we projected eight hundred seventeen million dollars until it is completed, the construction is completed in twenty twenty-five. So total is one billion, six hundred billion dollar US dollar will be invested to this project from Korean government. And the turnover of industry via EITA Korea project is the current value as of twenty seventeen is two billion, more than two billion US dollars. So they earn more money than the Korean government invested on this project. So the cost-benefit index is about one point two. But if we project it until twenty twenty-five, I think it will be more than one point five. So this is also economically very attractive. Number of created job in industry via EITA Korea project is more than eighteen thousand full-time employee. And also some industry created new business, and they said that some industry has created additional revenue of forty-four million US dollars. And afterward, they expect to create further market of about hundred ninety million dollars in the areas of accelerator, aerospace, utilizing the technologies applied for EITA. And also most of the small, medium-sized enterprise who participated in the EITA Korea project responded such that they had enhanced their capacity in terms of human resource and their quality of manufacturing. Also, they had grown up to be competitive in high-tech market. And what they established and what they expanded solely for implementation of the EITA Korea project, one spin-off company, one affiliated research institution, and four new department. So all this kind of expansion increased the number of jobs and also improvement. So this is just a case study for just for one, this kind of large infrastructure project in Korea. I will show couple of company which was grown up through this endeavor. So the first one is Vichy Tech. This is a company established in nineteen fifty-five, and during last forty years after the establishment, they are making vacuum interrupter, sub-insulation, and high-power breaker, and power distribution systems for utilities service company. So this is very stable, but not very big companies. About nineteen ninety-seven, they joined to develop a very small component for particle, actually, accelerator component, which is called RF input component. This is very small component. This is the first thing they participated in the research infrastructure project in Korea. And after that, the company changed totally from year two thousand. So from two thousand, they changed their name. The company name previously Bangmyeong Electronics to Vichy Tech. And their profile of the, they, what they, they are going to make is changing from this product to this product. Start accelerator, fusion, and aerospace businesses, making three hundred fifty megahertz flip tube Linux, manufacturing high-power crystal component, and rocket combustion chambers. And sometimes they are making actually engine gas generators. And from two thousand ten to now, they are extending their spectrums to they are participating more on the post generation photovoltaic, which is pre electron lasers systems in Korea. And they are very big company providing superconducting RF system for our project, LAON. They are making all of the superconducting cavities and cryo engines for LAON. Also, they are providing very important component for K-STAR project, which is nuclear fusion devices. Actually, they are providing the MBI heating sources and fragmentation component and also ion source. And even they are extending their boundary to the cryogenic engineering things. So they are providing distribution system for LAON accelerator and also rocket engine combustion chamber. So they are dividing their company to several different small companies and focusing a small areas. And their revenue changing early March in every year. So this year, they are aiming at five hundred million US dollar revenues. So this is the whole spectrum of they are making. So from accelerator, cryogenic system, plasma application, aerospace, vacuum system, electrical power systems. And all these changes from just start from this small piece, which is just a power couple in nineteen ninety seven. Another company, which is called Daewon Shis, is actually established in nineteen ninety six. They are start, actually they are joined to power supply R and D for K-STAR. So usually, they are calling themselves a K-STAR company. So actually, from then, they developed induction heater, power supplies for magnets and also electric fires and all the power supplies for heating source for fusion devices and also magnet power supplies for accelerators in Korea. And in twenty ten, for the first time, they developed a commercial product based on their technology, which is the plasma device for Samsung electronics. And also, they got, they win the B for the inverter for metro trains for solar metro companies. So now, they are making train, actually the electrical train companies and also the all of all different kind of power supplies. And couple of years ago, they found a new company to build a small accelerator, medical accelerator, which is called BNCT. So they are expanding. But they are starting from this day, just a power supply R and D in one of the Korean research infrastructure project. So their revenue is changing every year. And substantial fraction of this revenue is coming from the research infrastructure project they are joining. And they are still keep the quality R and D with the research institute. So from this talk, actually reflecting the high demand from the communities collectively pursue to expand their scientific research infrastructure, including superconducting fusion reactor, K-STAR, rocket launcher and various accelerator based facility. And these facilities always require complex, high precision and state of the art technologies with specialties. And the funda, normally the Korean government always demand social and economic added value from this project. So to meet this demand timely on the ETO Korea project or other Korean larger scale research infrastructure project, appropriate indicators that are useful and suitable for socioeconomic impact assessment should be further developed. However, for last ten years, many synergistic interactions between industries and large scientific facilities project have been observed. So from the industry point of view, more opportunities to participate in the largest science facility project to improve their technical capacity and capabilities as well as to acquire an opportunity to develop core technologies which have potential to be applied to the commercial product in the future. Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot from Dr. Won for highlighting the impact, social, economic impact of the investment in science and especially research facilities. The Korean case is really a case to study for all of us. Well, the last speaker is our friend Paulo Arthi Ateu. Paulo graduated in physics from the Comptensia University of Madrid. Has a doctorate in material science by the Basque Country University, also in Spain. He was postdoctoral associate and teaching assistant of semiconductor processing technology in the Department of Material Science and Engineering at the MIT in the United States. He has worked at Phis and NXP semiconductors in the area of micro and nano electronics and biotechnology and so many more. So I'm going to the last paragraph. At CERN, actually, he has been a knowledge transfer liaison officer, collaborating to enhance the knowledge transfer industrial network and relationships. Now he is section head of CERN European Union Office developing the new European Union funded projects and initiatives. Among others, I would like to mention ATTRACT initiative for breakthrough innovation ecosystems in Europe in detection and imaging technologies.
Okay, so first of all, thanks a lot to to all the organizers from Korea to Javier for letting me know about this opportunity. This is a great country and a great event. I like everything from the buses to the taxis, to the buildings, to the food, to the fantastic students and organizers that are here. So really congratulations because this is, this is amazing. This morning, we had the chance to visit the realm, Singapore. And well, it's really great. So thank you very much. Okay, it's really nice because all my colleagues before, they have said almost everything that needs to be said. So I have to say basically nothing. I cannot do better that they have done it. And but anyway, I will show some slides just for the sake of showing them about this small facility in Jerusalem that is concerned and how we try to contribute to a sustainable society with innovation. Because we try to contribute in many different directions and with many different initiatives. Since we are in a conference, we are speaking about sustainable cities. You have seen many examples in the presentations before of technology that end up in cities. Because they end up in hospitals or they end up in transportation or they end up in trading systems. And this is the humble contribution of of facilities in which the main mission is to push the limits of knowledge and of science. But you have a lot of spillovers. Javier, for example, commented about the invention of the World Wide Web before, which is how can we valorize this invention? What is the percentage of the global GDP that is based on the World Wide Web? By the way, you mentioned at CERN. So you never know. Innovation and breakthrough innovation is a lot about serendipity and happens in many ways. I will just illustrate some of them. So as you may know, CERN is the world's biggest laboratory for particle physics. It's an international organization that was established on the first of July of nineteen fifty three. Right after the World War Two, Europe was devastated and all the talent immigrated outside, especially to the United States. But there was a need to revitalize science and especially fundamental science for peaceful reasons. So we don't repeat the history that was happening in Europe before that years. And that is why CERN was created as a collaboration with many countries in Europe. Here you see an aerial photograph. So this is the famous LHC accelerator of twenty seven kilometers in which we accelerate protons at almost the speed of light in opposite directions and we make them collide. So we imitate the Big Bang many times and we study what happened and what happens in the origin of the universe. So this is the main mission of CERN. The mission of CERN is founded in in these basic pillars. So first of all, what the countries are paying for is to have an institution that push forwards the frontiers of knowledge. In our case, the secrets of the Big Bang. So a question that has been there from the Greeks. Ancient Greeks, they were, they were basically questioning themselves, asking themselves a very nice and simple questions that are normally the ones that really take us further. So if I take any object, am I able to actually get it infinite many times? Or will I arrive to a basic building block? This is the simple question that we are investigating for the moment. We arrived to ten to the minus twelve, which is the size of a quarter. But is there anything beyond this? We don't know. We are investigating. So this is the scientific mission. But many of my colleagues, they have, they have, they already said, this mission needs the development of unconventional instrumentation. So really cutting edge. We are not talking here about what industry delivers every day. But something that in many cases, it doesn't exist yet and you need to invent. We also trained the scientists and engineers of tomorrow. I mean, you see me like bald and prepared, but believe me, the average age at CERN is twenty three years old. So I'm an exception. And then, and really very important, we unite people from different countries and cultures. Probably CERN is one of the few places in the world where you can see an Israeli working with a Palestinian, an Indian with a Pakistani and a Spanish with a Spanish, which is even more challenging. So this is, this is a really important achievement. These I will skip because Javier already talked about industrial sciences market. Now let's repeat again with my colleagues, I've said, the impact of research infrastructures, large one or medium sized one in the innovation value chain. So this is the two main dimensions. Is now becoming to be better understood and most importantly, quantified. It's very recent. I mean, studies as they have been presented about ETO or about CERN or about many other research infrastructures from the economic point of view, they are relatively recent. They started on the, I would say nineties. But now they are starting to incorporate new indicators, especially what is the impact towards the education for young researchers and engineers to get better jobs and to provide them more opportunities in the job markets. And it is multi dimensional. Here I will sort of give a short glimpse of different dimensions of it. If you want to know about CERN in the special, well, you can consult many of the studies that have been published. There are recent ones. This is a very recent one using very traditional economic indicators. This is a study published by Florio. It's available even for free download in the Physics Archive collection of papers. And well, they conclude that for every Swiss franc invested in the LHC, you have a return of investment, again, by classic economical indicators of one point eight in its spillover. Of course, you can debate these studies and they are done with different models. But they're interesting to read. So I talk about the multifold impact. So I will focus on different aspects of it. So scientific results, geopolitical impact, direct economic impact, technological know-how. So there's a variety of them and I can speak hours and it's not really the key. Because we have to cook at dinner and so on. So I will transfer only on three of them. So on how we do it at CERN. First of all, transfer of know-how by high tech procurement contract. Procurement contracts are especially the one that you use. You put together and you launch, especially direct to industry, but also research institutes when you are building a facility and also when you enter in the operation phase of a facility. Then I will talk about knowledge and technology transfer. And then I will focus on this, especially through European funded projects because it's an interesting case of this. And I will highlight what has been measured and quantified by some of the different public studies in relation to CERN. First of all, procurement. When we need to build something like the LHC or when we need to build something like a high computing center, satisfying the needs of the amount of data that we generate, we have to buy things. And also, we have to not only buy them, but develop, developing them with industry. If you launch a procurement contract to build the cryogenic system of the LHC, which is colder than outer space, then this is not something that industry does every day. So we need to collaborate together from day zero. And this generates interesting developments for companies. So we buy something like transformers, switching boards and gears, cables, automation, power supplies, magnets. Also, the dimension of civil engineering, you need to do something that the, like the LHC. You need to do something that the, like the LHC, you need to dig holes in the ground. So construction, renovation of buildings, metallic structures, earthworks, roads, cooling and ventilation equipment. Here you see some pictures of the LHC tunnel in construction. It's a tunnel. Mechanical engineering and raw materials, machining, metalwork, special fabrication techniques like welding, raw materials, pipes, plates, off-site engineering testing, information technology, of course, computing systems, servers, software, network equipment, personal computer equipment. And many of this, building the LHC is a project of 15 to 20 years' time. You don't buy the technology that exists today. You buy the technology that the companies think that they are going to exist tomorrow and in many cases you just invent it because it doesn't exist. You cannot build an LHC with the technology of today because in 20 years, when you have to turn on the key, it will be completely obsolete. Cryogenics, optics, atomic components, photons and particle detectors, anything. Electronics and radio frequency. And all this is a process that is not just buying off the shelf because in many cases, as I said, it doesn't exist. You just designate the development of certain parts, components or systems to the company that is best suitable or you think that is going to deliver together with you. So the high-tech procurement contracts, they are more than just a simple supplier and buyer relationship. In many cases, they constitute a functional instrument for the transfer of know-how in both ways. And the value added for industry is measurable. I can show you some numbers. This is a study made some years ago based on economic utility of CERN contracts defined as the sum of increased sales and saved costs for the firm. Here you see the definition of the total utility, which is the resulting utility sales ratio gives a measure of the degree to which CERN has been useful to the firm. And here you see some examples. For example, in cryogenics and superconductivity, 1.7, electronics, 4.8, et cetera, et cetera. I don't go into these numbers. I hope that you can get the presentation from the organizers. In terms of economical impact, we have also several studies published. One of the most recent is this one by Castenovo. And it shows that after working with CERN on high-tech contracts and supplies, outperform the peers by investing in more R&amp;D and feeling more patents and also increasing the productivity and revenues of the business. Some numbers based on a survey of all 700 supplies in 33 countries, 2017, based on high-tech contract. Remember, we also buy chairs and tables and office things, but this is only high-tech contract. So 48, they have declared that they have improved products and services. 42%, they have developed new products based on new know-how and technology. 55% improved the technical knowledge in their field. 80% found or opened a new market to address that they didn't address before. And 62% use CERN as a marketing reference. So these are interesting numbers that you can read there. Now let's talk about this that I talk about is our relationship with industry in terms of buying components. Now we do make technology transfer as well, classical technology transfer and in many other ways. But I will talk about the classical way. This is, by the way, you can download, it will be much better than my talk. If you Google CERN know-how transfer, you can download all the memories that we published every year with numbers and indicators and so on. But these are just glimpses of where in the left side our technological domains that we develop every day for operating our infrastructure, that we have separated into families at CERN. And this is, in the middle, you have the big areas in which we are specialists in accelerators, detectors and computing. And there, in the right, are the main societal areas, now that we are talking about sustainable cities, where all the technologies end up with. This is also the difference, it will be too long to explain and as I said, you can download all the report. But these are all the different areas in which we exercise knowledge and technological transfers. So from licensing service to R&amp;D collaboration to public-funded projects to startups and spin-offs, entrepreneurship. So we do knowledge transfer and technological transfers in many ways because you never know which one is going to be better. No one size fits all. For example, just some glimpses. Sanofi went very recently to check if our machine learning algorithms helped them to improve the vaccine production. So now we have an agreement with them and they're using many of our machine learning algorithms to actually improve the search of new vaccines. We are talking about sustainability in the world. Well, this is an example of how algorithms that are used for fundamental science to detect which particle is which, in a collision, they go and get an application in the world of vaccines. Cultural heritage, just to put another one. We are participating in this big initiative, Europe for Culture, and we have developed a technology based on our accelerators in which it's a portable accelerator where you can generate X-rays based on a chip, the MenePix technology, that is actually used to restore paintings. Because when you restore paintings or ceramics, you need to use the pigments and the composition and the chemical composition of the mixture that the artist was using, or as close as possible. So this is, for example, analyzing this type of mixtures and also discovering all the paintings that are unneeded. We have two facilities at CERN that are unique in the world for testing radiation hard components. And radiation hard components, for example, they are key for space applications. And it's not only testing one chip or another. It's just testing the full systems. For example, for satellites. You have to build a satellite with really radiation hard components because you cannot send an astronaut everywhere that you receive a signal that something is wrong. So you need to rely on this technology. In the International Space Station, for example, we have many of, they use many of their components that we have developed at CERN for many purposes, from radiation hard chips to actually rule all the logistics of the system to personal dosimeters for astronauts. Another way in which we do traditional technology transfer, we have a network of business incubation centers, not built by CERN because there is no point in reinventing the wheel. But in Europe, you have a lot of incubators that are actually with really good small and medium-sized enterprises. And what we try to identify here, and in Spain there's a good example of collaboration with Javier and with the guys of Malaga, in which we try to identify those starting companies that could apply some of the technologies that we develop at CERN for our crazy purposes. And then, very important, and you have been talking about it, provide the label even. We have made some studies from companies that are interested in our technology and they can use it, but the thing that helped them most is just the label. In many cases, not even the money. So we have a network around Europe of many of them. And we are doing our best efforts to transfer as much as possible. This is again what I mentioned before in a little bit more detail, going to one detail down in technology. So one very important thing that has not been mentioned sufficiently and I really love it, is knowledge transfer through people. Every year, we train hundreds of students and newly graduates. They come and go of periods of months and they contribute to our research programs at CERN. And in return, we just train them, do our best to open them new opportunities for the market, not only for science and engineering, but in administration, in management. And these are people that, well, they get to benefit in new opportunities, in new ways of collaboration. They experience what is collaborating with people in different countries. They open up. So this is another way. And we are starting to carry the first studies following during several years, different students and where could they end up working, what kind of salaries they have, et cetera. We just have established, you can Google on the web, a CERN alumni association, very recently created. And one of the missions of these associations is actually starting an economic study that has not been done in Europe even by the commission side in the Marie Curie programs. And it's tracking the students during a period of five, six, 10 years and how it has been helping being at CERN. We have facilities for social innovation, especially applied to sustainability, how to inspire students with the technologies developed at CERN to make life easier for elderly people. There are so many examples, I cannot even talk about it. This is just a list of the different universities we collaborate. Education, we have programs for teachers. Every summer, hundreds of teachers from all levels, high school, master level teachers, et cetera. They come and we develop together new methodologies to explain and study science. And finally, I would like to finish with a big project. For example, this is in the statistics of how many EU-funded projects CERN took part during the past Framer program, FP7. So we took part in 87 projects and we coordinated 36 of them and with more than 550 researchers trained. And this is a big project, ATRAC, that I really recommend that you visit. This is the biggest one that we are running now. And we have, with money from the European Commission, we have funded 170 projects with seed funding of really breakthrough technologies, meaning technologies that will go into the market in 10 to 15 years' time and that the people think that they are crazy today. You can go on the website and check the 170 because there are examples from cryptography to blockchain to detectors to high-performance computing, et cetera. So this is the project ATRAC. So we collaborate not only with CERN, but an alliance of research infrastructures in Europe like CERN with industry. Here you have the European Industrial Research Management Association. We have entrepreneurs and business schools and of course the European Commission to cross the valley of that, blah, blah, blah. So innovation, as my fellow name Pablo has said this morning, this afternoon, is not about books, it's not about degrees, it's not about theory, it's about people. When you have a coalition of the willing, a lot can happen. And if you have infrastructures that leverage this coalition of the willing, it's when things happen. But nothing substitute the passion of people. And this is what we try to communicate at CERN. The passion for doing things in many different directions and contribute as much as possible to the society. So thanks a lot. Thank you, Pablo, for a very complete explanation of the many things that CERN do in technology. Okay, so we have finished a little bit late, but I'd like to have the opportunity to answer some questions from the floor. So may I ask the speakers to come here to the table and wait for the questions? So time for questions. If you don't have any question about technology transfer, I can explain what is a black hole, whether we create black holes at CERN.
Thanks so much. We have to get back to our school also. Thank you very much.
So after this group of presentations and before everybody goes out, I would like just some commentary in order to incentivize the questions. My question is for Dr. Quan. We have been very impressed by the project and the effort that they are doing in building this singular facility here at Ramon. We would like to know if the impact, the social impact, is already planned inside the big plan of the building and construction? Some kind of technology transfer, education program, something like that?
Yeah, actually, the government asked us to prepare for this kind of thing before we start the main part of the project, so yes.
And those projects are similar to those that Pablo has explained to us about CERN?
Right.
So a point for collaboration between CERN and Ramon there. Another question for Javier Diaz, who is the representative of the industry here. You have developed a complete new activity, Seven Solutions, a successful company today in the international markets out of technology developed at CERN. And I suppose that at the beginning, talking between technology people, businessmen and scientists should have some, I would say, well, breath times or any whatever. So explain a little bit about the most interesting features of this collaboration.
From the technical point of view, it was not so complicated. Usually it's not a bio issue. So it was much more complicated to understand the integration between the open and proprietary technology. So in such a way that we can, in one side, take the opportunity to make the technology grow and then the other to keep some technological advantage with some of the facilities and so on. So many of our discussions has been related, how to grow a company through open software, open hardware technology in, let's say, fair way. I think we find a good match between the different.
Thank you. Some person from the floor?
Yes, well, thank you for the presentations. They are really nice and a good experience to know from different sides of the innovation and different technologies. Well, my question is about the markets. You explained about many different facilities on the wall. How do you compete? Because I guess there is a huge market, but there are also that many projects, I don't know. How do you compete to get the best proportion of the projects, the indicators for your facilities?
What do you mean, Daniel? We don't want to be...
How you guess the projects you want to bring into your facilities? Because there are too many. For example, if I have a project I want to collaborate, how do I find the best place where I can go and collaborate?
What you mean, collaboration? Scientific collaboration?
Scientific collaboration.
Well, this is done normally through the national ministries and national institutes in particle physics, which is a very ecological field. We define every year the roadmap for particle physics in Europe. This time it was in Granada. And then, in this roadmap, there is an indication of what are the technologies that you will need, etc. And then, for joining CERN, there is a process, there is a government process.
Because my point is, when you are living in a city, okay, you do have access to so much information. It's difficult, I guess, for a scientific or for a student or any company, smaller businesses. Enterprise is not so that easy to identify all these facilities and to get a channel and to have the opportunity to get into all this. So I think this is a missing point about communication, about getting access. So I guess if you guys collaborate somehow and give access, not only to the industry and not only to the expertise, but to the citizens, you know, in many different direction, I guess you would understand better your role.
Maybe you can say something. So we identify a company to different... First of all, you need this first traction institution, in all case, but seven. And you go inside the industry of science and all these facilities. Little by little, you will start to know what are the different initiatives and the different developments. So this is one of the key ingredients. So you need that first facility to start. In addition to that, there is some kind of, let's say, tools or ingredient or cases, things in a star. So you have some association that allow to promote, in this case, utility for science and health in order to identify and promote the different opportunities. So on one side, you need the first facility as traction element. And second, you need some kind of association or private or public body that allow you to do flows and some others.
Yeah, but the question is a good one. And we have realized that at least at CERN in the last, only in the last few years, and in the last couple of years, there have been a very big effort to refurbish our websites. Now, luckily, if you just come raw, you could find, you enter in the novel website and you can find, if you are a student, what CERN can offer you. If you are a company, what CERN can offer you. If you are a general public, what CERN... So at least we have improved on something.
Recently, there is another opportunities, because recently, the International and Diversity Conference is not just occasion for technical exchange. There is a exhibition program. So industries come actively participating to show their product and to share their some technical products with the researching expert, with industry peers. And also, in our organization, we should strengthen our public relations department to make the communication channel with the publics. So that is another way to improve.
Yeah, thank you very much. I think, thank all of you for fantastic lectures, but my question is directed to Professor Tello. And I think your lecture is very practical and helpful. And I'm sort of excited to see the two slides that you concluded with way you facilitate for attracting students and researchers and lecturers to come and share their experiences. Do you, is it just European? Or do you have experience of this global? And also, because a lot of the things you talk about is very high tech, the procurement processes is literally very technology foresight oriented. Are there some indications, intellectual property in the process of the technology transfer thing, which you should...
Okay, so the first question. CERN is a European institution, but that doesn't mean that we don't have global collaboration. Actually, for example, we are the biggest laboratory in the US, for US people. So do you have different statues of members of CERN? So you have the member states, which are the members that actually put budget into CERN according to a percentage of the GPP. Mostly, they are European. Also, Israel, for example, is part of it. Then you have associated members, that they also contribute with personnel and so on, and they can enjoy any program that we have there. The only thing is that they don't have a vote in the council. And then, there are countries which are on the process of becoming associates, but we don't discriminate anyone that would like to collaborate, as long as we can do it. So your second question is about intellectual property. I will distinguish, let's say roughly, some cases. So first, our mission at CERN is not patenting technology. We put our technology for the benefit of the world as much as possible, because this is part of our mission. That was one of the key elements of why the World Wide Web succeeded, because it was public. Otherwise, today, as we do, when we connect with different mobile networks, we will be connecting with different WWWs and pay money for the connection task. But thanks to this invention, was public, succeeded, and now is available. We do patent sometimes when the transfer is done to a small company, and this company tells us that they prefer that we have a patent. But we never ever give an exclusive license to anyone, because we are due to all our member states equally. So this is the general policy. Now, in a special procurement contract, since those are contracts with a particular company or a particular group of companies, the IP rules might change depending on, but it's not really common.
My question goes to Pablo. In case of CERN, you pronounced you do some make kind of okay is your activities maybe, it could be both. But in case of a company, another Pablo, yes? How much money you invest and how much money you make and compare two sides, you know how much you cut money there, right? How efficient your investment was, you can easily calculate, right? But in your case, it looks like things are very complicated. In case of cost and benefit, it's different from product company negotiation method. So if that is the case, we also cannot communicate each other, because you say something, we do a good job, but you cannot compare the internal results. And can you explain how you can minimize the gap to understand each side of this performing?
So really thank you for the question, because it's a very interesting one. And it has to do with economic models. So at CERN, we have a budget that is fixed by our treaty, our constituency of one billion Swiss francs a year. It doesn't affect inflation and so on, for due and for that. We have one billion Swiss francs in here. Now, how we measure the return of investment? And this is a fantastic thing, because since economics can do anything, you have studies that depending on the answer that you want to get, you have it. For example, if you read the recent studies by Florian, as I put there, using neoclassical economic indicators, so return of investment and present value calculation, for every Swiss franc that have been invested in the LHC, you have a return of investment of 1.8. But what is the trick? And as you will see in Ramon, in the future, what is the depreciation, the depreciation percentage that you use? And what you do, if you want to trick, is as you make among the color simulation, using very different depreciation percentages, and you say, which one is the nicest one, this one? Now, you can make even studies considering the social impact, because the time, there is a classical study of the amount of euros or dollars or whatever that you can assign to one minute, that people spend time in every country in the world. This has been done economically. Then you can measure the impact of your social networks, the impact of the visits to your facility, and then you will always have a positive return of investment. So I don't believe in economic studies anymore. I think that research and science is something that creates options for solutions to problems. And as the famous director of Harvard said, "You don't like science, try engineering."
Thank you for all the guests. The presentation was very informative, very interesting. I have a question, one is, one question from Pablo, from you.
Ah, but they have changed both of us. I mean, you mean the nice one or the... Just in this way, because I...
You mentioned that you train scientists and engineers for the future, yeah? So how do you manage the trainings? Do you have enough stuff for the training, special training, or do you use some other organizations and outside services?
No, but they are trained on the job. They are trained on the job. When a PhD student comes to CERN or to do his PhD, be prepared, because you're gonna suffer. They gotta put you in building whatever machine learning thing or a cryogenic system on the LHC. Then we'll have to learn based on your peers. This is a reunion process.
The next question is Professor Juan, Professor Juan. And as you say, there are three kinds of performance assessment. It's very important for the visual, R and D and... So how do you design the assessment of performance? Is it designed by your institution or team of your resources?
Actually, the result of that study is done by one of the consulting company. They design how the indicators and the researcher, the values, and also they did surveys. Sure, yes.
Can I go first, Pablo? It's not the vision of CERN, but do you have some kinds of examples of focused on the industrial technology? Do you have some special plan for collaboration between CERN and company? Focused on the industrial technology?
Top examples? Many. Why, rabbit, that my colleague here has put an example. It's an incredible technology for measuring financial transactions to the nanosek, which is what you make the money now in automatic transaction. And one of the biggest users is JP Morgan, for example. The World Wide Web in the past. For example, nobody talks about it, but the cloud was invented at CERN. The only thing is that we call it the grid. Grid computing, you know, I mean, any researcher in the world that is collaborating with CERN can connect from your laptop to a big data centers that we have two in Highbury and one at CERN and say, "Okay, I would like to analyze the collision that was taking place in Atlas experiment in 1983 whatsoever." And this is what is now called the cloud. But when CERN started this in 1980, it was called the grid. So there are many examples, superconducting magnets, current bending system, so there are many. Now, for example, there is a soup facility at CERN that you can Google, it's called Open Lab. There is a mini public-private partnership. So, and it's about computing algorithms. So Deutsche Telekom, for example, or Huawei, or they are interested in testing their algorithms or machine learning. Or we had a competition very recently with Yahoo, because they came and they said that the algorithm was searching, like in Google, Yahoo is the Russian group. They said that they were faster, and we were a little bit faster, but not that much. So, and the motto of Open Lab is, you make it and we break it. We're pretty old with Amamatsu, for example, or many. Okay, my friends, it's a little bit late. It has been a very interesting meeting and a question and answer session. Thank you very much to our speakers for their dedication and very interesting speeches. Thank you again to the organizers for making possible to have this open window to science as a contribution to smart cities. As you can see, the motor drive, the economic motor drive that is necessary for every village, every city, etc., can be here, because this is added value, jobs, and this is added value activities. So thank you again very much. And all of us are at your disposition the next day if you want some more information or some other questions. Thanks again.